See a nun in person, anyone on Zoom? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Pat, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, I mean, you're joining the committee, and you're not a resident of Dalton, but you still kind of get the passion for the town, so we welcome that.
I'm glad to see you back.
Yeah, so thank you for that, Pat, and thank you for volunteering and looking forward to the collaboration. So, thank you.
Well.
Appreciate it. Number seven is to execute the contract with our chief. So, our chief's contract has come to its term, almost to expiration here on the 25th day of February 2024, so we, the board, have, along with Tom, Andrew, and Chief, have negotiated new contract terms, and that's before us tonight. We previously approved this within executive session, so tonight is the official ratification of the contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they've got a motion to accept the terms and conditions of the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the terms and conditions of the contract with the chief of police, Deanna Strout, as presented.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
And abstentions from Mr. Strout. Motion carries. Great, thank you. And thank you to Chief and Tom for the great work behind this, and getting it all set. So, all right, number eight, signed contract with our DPW superintendent. Mr. Richardson, would you like to present this to us?
Yes, this is slightly erroneously worded. It's actually a contract amendment to the salaries and hours of the superintendent. We are inserting a paragraph allowing the DPW superintendent to receive overtime pay for snow and ice time, which he puts in above his normal 40-hour schedule.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the amendment to the contract between Edward Hall and the town of Dalton as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And abstentions from Mr. Strout. Motion carries. Great, thank you. And thank you to Chief and Tom for the great work behind this, and getting it all set. So, all right, number eight, signed contract with our DPW superintendent. Mr. Richardson, would you like to present this to us?
Yes, this is slightly erroneously worded. It's actually a contract amendment to the salaries and hours of the superintendent. We are inserting a paragraph allowing the DPW superintendent to receive overtime pay for snow and ice time, which he puts in above his normal 40-hour schedule.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the amendment to the contract between Edward Hall and the town of Dalton as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Great, and thank you to Ed for the great work he does for the town. Number nine, appoint police detail officers and constable for March 5th primary election. I don't see Heather, so Mr. Richardson.
Yes, this is, again, part of a new state law that requires the select board to be the party appointing detail officers and constables. As in the past, I'm recommending that you reassign that duty to the police chief, as has been done for many years.
Okay.
So, yeah, a motion to, I don't know, to emptyize or...
Authorize.
Authorize, yes, there we go.
Okay.
The police chief to make those appointments.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we authorize the police chief to assign the following police details for the 2024 calendar year elections. Presidential primary, March 5th, 2024, two officers, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Annual town election, May 13th, 2024, two officers, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. State primary election, September 3rd, 2024, two officers, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the state presidential election, November 5th, 2024, two officers, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
Yeah, quick question.
Mr. Boyle.
Two officers, does that mean two officers are going to work their whole, I forget how many stated hours were, but they differ from election to election, or does that mean two officers are going to split up the total shift for one day?
So, this is not my request, this is the town's request, that to me says you want two officers for that entire period shift. I don't...
I think there was a recommendation from the traffic commission to retire an officer in direct traffic because of potential traffic problems coming down here. I think there was a recommendation about a month and a half ago.
We always have an officer in the polling location as well, so...
Great. We'll have this conversation elsewhere for another time, because, again, I wasn't aware of that, so it's probably something we should discuss.
Thank you. Well, to Mr. Boyle's point, if we can tonight authorize this request, but Chief, if you feel as if you need additional details for traffic, because I know there's a request to Mr. Strout's point, a request for a traffic review because of new location, but we're kind of a little bit behind that, so if you feel that you need another one for traffic detail, we can amend this with your recommendations.
If it's okay with you also discussing Heather, we'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out, okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 10, sign a warrant for March 5th primary election. Ms. Richardson.
Again, the town clerk, this is a required act by the select board, as has been prepared by the town clerk as a warrant for the presidential preference primaries to March 5th, 2024, here.
Is there a motion to accept the warrant as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the warrant as presented from the town clerk for the March 5th, 2024 primary election.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I steal a pen? This has to be in black ink, right?
I checked out, I'm not sure if I take it.
Anybody with a black pen?
I promise I won't put my chair over here.
It is a nice pen though.
Thank you.
All right, it's on video, that I have to have a pen. Ran out of ink. It was a nice pen, y'all.
It was, yes.
There you go, sir. so the pen goes back here.
Sign the contracts at the end?
Yeah. No, we can sign them. All right. Number 11, revised electric vehicle charger proposal. You want to introduce it, Tom?
You may recall our last town meeting, or this may have been our, but in any case, the town has money for electric vehicle chargers, and thanks to Todd Logan, I'm sorry, Tony.
Tony, come on up to the front.
They're both back there. He's been working tirelessly on first getting the setup cleared for the CRA chargers, and that project is moving forward. We're now looking at the prospect for additional chargers, and there are a couple of different kinds of markets out there. The markets for the Level 3 chargers are backed up perhaps each time once, and those are the higher level, faster chargers. Level 2 chargers, a little bit slower, a little bit less powerful, are still able to be reimbursed by Eversource, and there are companies out there that are seeking to gain a footprint in the business, and some of them are offering extraordinary terms, including absorbing the town's cost after all of the rebates are received from Mass Electric, and Livingston is one of those companies, and Tony has a little bit more detail on that for you.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Thank you, gentlemen, for having me out again, and thank you for pushing me up on the agenda, I kind of appreciate that. Which I hear are good news, because it's all good news, and I'm glad to say I hope that we take advantage of this. I sent a bunch of material to you, or emailed a bunch of material to you, and I just want to start off by calling your attention to the green-coded maps, and I keep referring to the economic justice communities, and I've given a perspective in terms of Berkshire County, the green is those communities based on income. And in Dalton, you'll see, there's a sizable neighborhood, the second map showing that, of our economic justice community. Basically, that means the annual household income is 65% of the annual median household income of the state. So, we have a sizable portion of our town, and a good part of our population that falls into that category, and it's in those areas that we're principally citing the chargers. To bring you up to speed on the Level 2, as Tom mentioned, I met with Dave Callahan from Universal, our contractor, and also an engineer from Eversource, and having met with Richard Peters of the CRA, we decided the site along the western rear perimeter of the parking lot, that's scheduled to go ahead and be completed sometime in May. There will be a delay, possible delay, given the transformer upgrade, but it should be taken care of, and we can ask for an extension if we need to be, it's not a big deal. So, we're all on board with that. So, that's going to be Level 2 chargers, two chargers, four ports, 19.2, that's the maximum Level 2 charge allowable, so that's going to be a good system. Proposal I've made, and this really came out of talking to Mark last time, when we talked about the charger out there, I didn't have a lot of information, but I followed up on it, the charger out there is a Level 2 charger, and one of the ports is not in use. To upgrade that and fix it would cost more than to get a new charging system. So, my first proposal for Level 2 is to have the same charging network or bank that we have at the CRA. You will be reimbursed 100% for the hardware. So, on the first page, Level 2 chargers, you see that the total request is $36,466, inclusive of hardware, software for five years, maintenance for five years, all signing, paintage, and ballers. So, again, it would be a replica of what the CRA has, we would be reimbursed the tune of $23,200, that's through the Department of Environmental Protection. We've already submitted an application, we've been through that, we will expect a net cost of some $13,266. That's a real value. The better part in my mind is, this will hopefully be completed before the end of 2024. The delays in terms of supplies aren't as significant or lengthy as they are with, but I'll get to the Level 3 chargers. So, I do hope that you consider that, and you approve that for the senior center. I've talked to the director here, I can't remember the name.
Kelly?
Yes, I did, and she was for it, so, again, we have the space, it would be located where the charger is there, the contractors agreed to remove that charger also, and what they'll use is the infrastructure to tie in to the new charging bank, which will be four ports, not the one port there. Okay, please interrupt if there's questions or concerns.
I'm not sure what the age of that charger is, but was that under a maintenance agreement prior?
I have no knowledge of that going back.
Who owns that, who maintains it? Because it hasn't been there long.
Right.
Right, and if it's under a five-year maintenance agreement, it should be repaired. I don't know, I have no idea.
Yeah.
I have no idea, but if we don't know, we shouldn't replace it until we know, that would just be my opinion.
I know when we looked into it, this was some time ago, I contacted the contractor, and he pretty much said that system, parts, and materials was really outdated, given the technology that's gone on, and I took a picture of it, and I think it goes back at least five years, maybe more.
I think it's five or older.
Yeah, so, again, I thought was better to upgrade rather than to repair. And, by the way, that's an illegal, by today's standards, charging station. It's across the sidewalk, it's not ADA compliant by any means. The new system would have to be in front of the sidewalk, so that people...
Makes sense.
But it would be ADA compliant, so it was another win-win situation. Okay, it's sort of a virtuous cycle too, because we're going to be reimbursed from the CRA at the tune of some $23,000, and we're going to be reimbursed for this for some $23,000, so Dalton is a real wonder there. DCFC chargers, several months ago, there were no rebates, to my knowledge, the Department of Environmental Protection closed down Level 3 charger rebate programs, almost two years now. This program is powered up Eversource directly, and DCFC chargers are the same as Level 3 charge. Level 3, simplistically, it's a 480-volt system, and it ranges from 50 kilowatts to hundreds. In this case, 162.25 for a charge point, and Livingston's is 180 kilowatts, it's a huge machine, these machines, oh, I'll get to that. In any event, you have some proposals, Universal gave us their initial proposal, and you'd see, the numbers are quite hefty in terms of the hardware and software, and even though we are reimbursed significantly, Dalton would be on the tune to quite a bit of money. I hope you've had time to look those over, but I'm more concerned, or more focused on Livingston and, to some extent, Voltrek. Last week, I met with a Voltrek representative and an engineer from Voltrek, and we walked the various sites here, Pine Grove Park, and also Greenwich Park, and they're all doable in terms of upgrading transformers to bring a fast-speed charger, high-speed charger to the area. Livingston, I've talked to the individual, as I mentioned last time, I followed up with phone calls to communities, latest being Westport, they have a DCFC charger. Livingston is a company dating back to 2017, with 7,000 installations. They are primarily in the central New York area, Level 2s. They're trying to get a footprint in Massachusetts, tow-hold, and the terms are generous in terms of what Eversource is offering for a rebate, 100% for made-ready work and 100% made-ready for the customer side. So, the only thing we would really be on the hook for is software and maintenance. Livingston is willing to absorb those costs, we would be simply responsible for painting some, for painting, that is, the painting on the driveway. So, they're covering us to the tune of, you know, basically $400,000 to $500,000. We own the machines, we set the rate, we get paid accordingly fee, deducted 9%, which they collect every month. We were assigned an account manager, and the issues, that would be the person to speak to. I spoke to the Westport manager, he's had his machine in for a year, he noted no difficulties, he was awaiting his quarterly dividend check. I spoke to Oswego, and they had a Level 2, it was a difficulty in terms of the electrical work, they had approved the electrical work by a non-licensed electrician, I think they were more accepted themselves in Livingston. Co-host is going with Level 2, they've signed a contract, and they're looking forward to having Level 2s coming in and replacing their charge points. I can follow up with additional, and I will follow up with additional references, but I strongly consider you taking Livingston's recommendation. Voltrek has yet to get back to me after our visit in terms of what they would quote us as their DCFC chargers. Again, the timeframe for these are at least two years out. No matter who you go with, the transformer box and the transformer are way delayed. So, if we get into the queue, at the very least, we're ahead of the game of some other communities. I will say that Level 2s are coming into Berkshire County, I think the best westerns have them there, put in shortly, there's interest, I know there's going to be banks down in Lee and Great Barrington, aside from the Tesla model, which is proprietary, so it would improve our community, I think, to look ahead in terms of a long-term investment for these Level 3 chargers.
And these would be, again, clarify the locations that they're...
The location would be here at the senior center, in all likelihood, across the way, where they would tap into power and bring it there. Up by the Pine Grove Park, there's that brick building there, and across the street, there's a pole, it would be brought there, we'd have paving monies left over from last year's ARPA, which was approved at a town meeting to cover that paving. And rather than four slots, it would be two, since these are dual-port chargers, and at Greenwich Park, which has the paving, which would have to be upgraded, both with signage and also for ADA compliance.
But is Greenwich part of the environmental justice...
No, Greenwich is not part, and so, thank you, Tom. So, Livingston has agreed to eat an additional $40,000 of cost, because it's not part of the environmental justice population. She makes no bones about it, they want to start, get a tow-hold in Massachusetts.
This would also involve a parking improvement at both Pine Grove and Greenwich.
Pine Grove would have to be paved, signed, and signage provided, and Ballers, of course, and Greenwich.
Has four spaces or two?
Two, this is one machine, these machines weigh half a ton.
And it's one handicap, would it have to be limited to handicapped accessibility?
You know, it doesn't say that in the grant, but I would think it would be, because they ask us to apply for any other grants that are available, but DDP hasn't opened any grants for Level 3, but they certainly make ADA a requirement, and I would recommend that we do ADA compliance, absolutely. So, we could entail an additional paved area, but it's a good thing to do.
So, there would be one handicap and one non-handicap spot for each of these, senior center, Pine Grove, and Greenwich.
That's right.
And across the town are paving where necessary and painting, all.
That's correct, and paving monies have been approved for Pine Grove from last year's ARPA month. So, there's no paving to be done here or at Greenwich.
Questions from the board?
Tony, what would the initial award, would it be for, took the Pine Grove and senior center? Would we have to put out the $426 and then get reimbursed the $400 from Eversource, and $26 from Livingston?
No, the awarding would be Livingston, we don't put up a penny, we don't put up a dollar. They assume it. Now, I want to be clear, they haven't had their engineers come out here, but Voltrex did, and so, with your permission, I, when the time comes, I'd ask them to come here and to see what, you know, their work would be covered, because they're claiming now they're going to cover the work up to $120,000 in infrastructure. We've made that part of the proposal, $80,000 for the machine, $120,000 for the infrastructure, gratis software, gratis maintenance for five years, and they'll eat the additional cost, lesser reimbursement at Greenwich Park.
So, they'd take the Eversource reimbursement directly?
They would, and that isn't taken until it's completed.
It's completed.
All the inspections are done, just as it would be for our Level 2s here, there's no money coming back to Dalton until the inspection is completed.
Who makes money?
They're going to make money...
It's a lot of money.
They're going to, they're going to make, well, first person, the first entity is Eversource, I mean, these are our dollars being used to provide a service. Eversource is in the business to sell electricity, they're going to be selling tremendous amounts of electricity, so they're certainly paying us now to be paid back later over a long term. I think they think in terms of 30, 40, 50 years out, they're not looking in short range. And I think Livingston says, I'd like to get a footprint here, I'll eat the cost, and hopefully after five years, you'll up, sign up or up again to have my software and maintenance package. And they get a 9% cut out of whatever fees we look for. But we own the machines and we set the rate. It's very incredible.
The question, the follow-up question from last meeting was, what's the percentage of vehicles in our town that are EV?
I don't know. I know that when I read the national statistics, EV sales are going up, they've slowed up late, but they are on the upswing, Massachusetts now, when you do buy an EV, at the point of sale, you'll be reimbursed at the state level, I don't know if the state level, I think it's within six to eight weeks, you submit for the state-level reimbursement of some $3,000 or $3,500. But at the point of sale now in Massachusetts, you will also be credited, assuming the vehicle and your income and so on and so forth, you'll be credited $7,500. So, the incentives are only improved.
Right.
But I don't have that number.
Okay, that's fine.
No.
There's a couple of things that I would want to, I think one comment I have is that, or clarification questions, that you're asking us for approval to move forward in more detail on the proposal, right, the engineering part with Livingston and things of that nature, is that what you're asking tonight?
Well, I said to Livingston, I said I was going to bring this forward to the select board, after having brought it forward to Tom, spoken to Tom. So, yeah, I want to cover the bases too, I want to make sure that, you know, whatever we were deciding in the future, we've done our homework before, that the engineers come out here. I mean, today, things are done with the drone, or overheads, and they can, you know, they can do a lot of that, but I would ask that they come out here in person, with some skin in the game.
And the second, Tom, I would want to see the full proposal and contract to the board, review it in detail, adjust the scope of work or the price we get back, whatever negotiation we want to put in, and then have formal legal review on it as well, because I have a lot of different questions, but they won't be answered until I see the, see the contract.
Yeah.
So, any agreement?
And also, an indication of what the, what the software and maintenance costs will be in five years.
Yeah, the longer-term cost to the town, but I'd be in support of authorizing further negotiations to get more information and potentially a contract that we could review.
I would support that. Is that a motion, Dan, or John, is there any?
Well, I said, any kind of question, you tell me.
Go ahead, Mr. Boyle.
First of all, where would the location at Greenwich Park be?
Well, at either end, John, you have handicaps. I think at the end towards the stores, there's a handicap area there, somewhere in the parking, so it could be there.
It could be near the store complex.
Yeah, towards that, towards that.
Second observation, do you think it's really necessary to have a facility in Pine Grove Park? The area is already complicated and has extensive congestion already, back to the point where this board is considering cutting down trees to make room for more cars. And I'm not certain that you're oversaturating the market in one section of town. I mean, there's one right here, and Pine Grove Park is like, what, 500 feet away? I don't know if that's really a great idea.
I would, I would offer, John, just a different view of that, is that I think Pine Grove is the perfect spot, because it's where most of the sporting events happen during the summer, we have out-of-towners traveling to Pine Grove from many directions, whether it be for baseball, or football, or soccer, and it would be a perfect location for one, whereas I think the senior center is much more inconvenient for people visiting the town, that they wouldn't even know that the charger is here. So, I think it's a great location, plus it's within that social, the environmental justice location, whereas the senior center is not, correct?
Yeah, I think it's a good location. I do, John.
Oh, I'm just talking about the congestion, there's no question about it, there's an issue up there, but why else would we be cutting down trees that were planted for a specific purpose to make more room for cars, because it's so congested?
Well, the last meeting I know of that was suggesting, I can't, but my initial suggestion, and still the same, John, is toward that brick building.
Yeah, I know where that brick building is.
And that doesn't entail any tree cutting, it entails paving, but no tree cutting.
Yeah, it's a nice spot, because people can bring their kids to the, to the little field there and whatnot, and...
field there and whatnot, and all the other activities, so. We're going to congestion in no matter what, with the sports that happen in Pine Grove.
Well, I, I hope, you know, I'll follow through. We, I, to answer your point, Joe, I asked the, speaking with Tom, I asked the Westport Town Manager to send along the contract and the scope of work.
Uh, Westport, no, I want it from the vendor, we wouldn't want, what's Westport? Sorry, I'm trying.
Westport, that is what Westport demanded of the vendor.
Yeah, we don't want to see their contracts be confidential. They should not share it with us. We should get it directly from the vendor.
That's a public record.
Oh, well, yeah, I just, I just, you can do that, but I don't want to see a contract from Westport, I want to see the contract from the vendor and do our own negotiation. Because their terms and conditions could have changed since that contract was signed. So I want to see it directly. Then we, then we can get it from Westport. Westport shouldn't be the first contract we see. We should see it from the vendor and all the detail.
Okay. And the Pine Grove Park discussion, yeah, one more observation. Did you consider the outline parts of the community, such as the end of Dalton Division Road where the store complex is, for a potential site? That would not only serve Dalton and its outline areas, but would serve Pittsville and it's on a main route?
It's not an environmental justice area. That's a problem.
I understand that.
It's not town property.
Because if it's not under environmental justice, they're not...
The store, Greenridge Park.
They're not going to get the grant money they want or all the deductions from the energy companies. But Johnny, it would be more cost to the town.
Greenridge Park is town property, and that's where that would be. It wouldn't be in the store complex, it would be in the Greenridge parking area.
Not the store complex, the park.
Even where the parking area is?
The park.
Is already, again, a congestion problem. People literally park in the middle of the street, because there's only seven or eight parking places there. And that would be less.
Well, I wouldn't say it's less, it's another space, it's for an electric vehicle, and there's certainly...
Two electric.
Yeah, and then you get the electric vehicle, you plug in, you're paying the rate, whatever we set, and that rate is available for the forty-minute charge or the fifty-minute charge, and if they stay there longer, it goes up.
I just take a little more thought by the way into this whole thing. The congestion in these areas, and lots of parking places on Greenridge Park. The police chief is here, and certainly he has had a multitude of complaints about, and there's, shake your head. I don't mean to drag in this, but about the excessive parking in the street down there, when there's not a lot of traffic going, you shouldn't go in. And now we're going to take, wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Take the seven or eight parking places and reduce them by forty percent? By taking two away?
We have about two dozen spots, I think, John. And I understand the concern in terms of when the park is used, but for close to six months out of the year, that park is unused.
Very valid.
I, I would argue that the Pine Grove location would be used significantly, especially during the sports season. I mean, we can measure it, but I, I think that'll be in high demand. Yeah.
Tony, Livingston must do some sort of analysis, I would say, to see if it's worth their time and money to put something somewhere. Is that something we can, you can, when you reach out to them and, I'm curious to see if, what, what they thought the utilization would be, would be for these things.
I don't think they look at that so much, Mark, as the idea that they're selling a product and they're breaking into the market, the market being Massachusetts, and that if they get an imprint or a tow hole, it's going to benefit their company. They're really, only thing they're responsible for is the software and the hardware. EverSource is covering infrastructure. Now, they are assuming EverSource is going to cover a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of infrastructure. That's where I'd like to have that in writing, that no ifs, ands, or buts, and it's more your covering, if not the town.
Right, yeah.
But they're giving a hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards that end. So I think they're being, I hope they're being circumspect of their business, I would hope they know just what it costs to put in a fast charger. So, but we can research, you know, we can, like Joe said, look at documents. They have given us a formal quote. I mean, it's not detailed, they have put it out there and said, here's the money, and here's what we end up paying, zero. Bottom line shows zero dollars.
I think where we've progressed so far were the last couple of times we've met, so I do like the, I do like this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Dan, you had a recommendation, or do you want to move that to a motion, or what do you like to do?
Uh, the move that we authorize the town manager and, well, I suppose to, just the town manager to proceed with negotiations with Livingston Energy Group, pursuant to the proposal for the dual-port direct current fast chargers at Pine Grove Senior Center and Greenridge Park.
I'll second that.
Motion's just second, any discussion?
It would be assumed that you'd be a part of the process with the town manager, involved in the Green Committee.
And just for clarity, or to amend that motion, that contract needs to come here to the board for review before any signature.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Abstentions, motion carries. Great.
One thing, gentlemen, I know we devoted more time to putting my initial proposal on the level two for the senior center.
I'm not as playing a favors in that one, but leave it to the board. I, I would recommend that we, we don't know the answer if it's under warranty, right?
Still works, one of them still works, I use it.
I would say we're, we're a couple of years out from being, you know, operational with whatever potential Livingston project that could come to fruition, that we just authorized negotiations toward. In the meantime, if one of our chargers out there is not functional, we should figure out, you know, why, you said it's already, the cost to repair is greater than the cost to install a new one.
Well, there, there are funds available for repair. I don't know that much about it, but I did send some of that information around.
It's in budget this year?
No.
So where are the funds for repair?
No. I, I can't speak to it in detail, but I saw that there was a program for repairing E V chargers. I think it's a state program, but you had to be on the, an official list of state chargers. So I put this charger on that official list. By the time I got it on the, this year's grant.
Oh, I, so it's, so it's an alternative funding source that we possibly could tap into. So we'll just defer to that and see what the result is and not, not, not address this tonight.
Can I just speak?
Absolutely, yeah.
The first thing is, that really is non-ADA compliant. It's, it's a hazard, especially in the modern world.
We have a lot of ADA issues we have to address.
But that, that is, that, that is an ADA issue in terms of the future.
We would, agreed, we have many.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going to prioritize this over the others.
Well, the other point is, the bottom line is thirteen thousand dollars plus, where a repair, and I believe when I asked for an estimate from Universal, was five to six.
If it's an ADA issue that you're concerned about, Tony, we'll bring it to the ADA committee and prioritize against all of the ADA issues. We're not going to approve thirteen thousand tonight unless you want to put up the capital and go to town meet it.
Well, that's what I, no, it's not thirteen, you'd have to approve...
Have to approve twenty-three. No, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, that's the request.
Thirty-six to the request with reimbursement, so.
Yeah, that, that's what I really...
Yeah, well, I'm not going to prioritize this over other ADA, I'm not going to recommend we do that.
No, no, I meant, that's one point, Joe, in terms of ADA. The second point is that you're going to get four chargers, which you can charge people for. You can't charge people on that.
Yeah.
So if anybody uses it, the town's doing it gratis, whereas the four new chargers, we set up a program like the CRA where we charge people.
We, we don't know the utilization rates of this charger.
Yeah, well, but there's a car in front of it, and one of the...
We don't know the utilization stats, we don't know how often it's used, we don't know that detail to tell us what, you know, if a, an investment is needed at this point, so, I don't know, any other board members, I wouldn't support that this evening. I'd suggest that you look at, we look at the alternative funding sources and put on that list.
Take it as a separate issue for that.
I'd be interested in supporting it, but in the context of the remaining capital requests, the overall capital request for the town, I'd like to see everything in totality.
Because the priorities in the, in the town, they're not E V chargers, they're roads. So we got to look at it in the totality of everything else, so I wouldn't support making a decision tonight from the board perspective, but any other board member can certainly speak up and make a motion if they want to, and see where the vote lands. I won't block a vote, for sure. Any other board members have a different opinion?
And please remember, the D C S C chargers are two years out, this is soon. That's the other consideration of time.
My, my other, my other concern is that if we have E V chargers, and this one's being not properly maintained, not your issue, town manager needs to review that, how are we going to make sure we have a maintenance program in these chargers as we go forward? Who would town management? It's not going to be the Green Committee. That's responsible for infrastructure, right?
But we have, we have, those new chargers come with software and a five-year...
Right, but who's going to maintain that relationship with the vendor? Who's going to make sure they're doing their work? Who's going to make sure they're operational on a weekly check or whatever it is, right? So that's town manager's responsibility.
I'd be interested in looking at this again on the February twentieth meeting, if the board doesn't have an objection.
Or it would be after that?
I would, I would object to that, because I think what needs to happen is that this needs to, this needs to be looked at as a separate issue.
Okay.
So is there a motion to do something to do?
No, not at this time, I'm just talking.
Concessions to treat it as a separate issue at a later meeting.
I would treat it as a separate issue, with the town manager working within the rest of his capital and priority, and look at alternative funding sources, and answer the question about the maintenance and utilization. Is it a program worth putting in thirty-six grand initially with the reimbursement? Reimbursements may change, but just say it's, it is what it is, total investment's thirteen thousand compared to everything else on the list. We haven't done that homework yet.
Yeah, and, and so that's separate from installing a new one closer to the transformers you were talking about before. The D-level... Dealing with this one is separate from... That's right, and that's new from the last time I spoke to you.
Right, so we're...
My conversation with Mark charged me to think that, let's, let's, let's deal with that.
Tonight, we have support for Livingston proposal.
Okay.
To flush that out for the locations on the sheet here, Pine Grove...
Greenridge.
And Greenridge. And the senior center is in that for the new ones, right?
For the fast chargers, that's it.
Right, so we can address the other thing later on down the road, because we can't, the first proposal has us being charged nothing.
Tony, if we could just one up and run it, excuse me, through the repair process, will it gate having to go for a new one in your proposal with Livingston?
Well, you'll have a, you'll have an older system, technology certainly has progressed rapidly in the five or six years. You can't charge people for that system, so it's open to anyone, and as they see fit. And as I say, as I say, I don't want to harp on the ADA issue, but it's, it's a tricky proposition to haul that cord across that sidewalk and use it, even for an able-bodied
So there are a lot of reasons right there, and I agree with you completely, to probably take a real hard look at before we spend any money on a used car, so to speak. Thank you.
I think it's definitely worthy of consideration in the context of the other capital requests. When, when will we have a final, I know we're reviewing by tonight, not on the schedule, and maybe do have the schedule in Congress tomorrow.
Previously, I've asked the town manager for a three-year capital projection. We have, we've not seen that yet.
And just one other thing.
Yeah, sure.
I would like to make... Based on the tax rate of eleven cents per thousand, the bottom line to Dalton would be dollars on the tax rate, that is, thirteen dollars would come out to like five or six dollars on the tax bill. Certainly forty thousand would be more on the order of fifty dollars if you're in the , not even fifty, forty dollars a year. So it's pennies on the dollar.
Pennies on the dollar, I look at five million dollars in investments, right? Because we got a quarter of a million on Waka Brooks, seven hundred thousand dollars on Dalton Division. So, roads, roads, roads.
I was on financial, for ten years.
Right, you know exactly where I'm coming from, Tony.
And I know it's all, as I mentioned, the tax rate.
Yeah, we got to see the big picture.
What's our remaining ARPA funds as well, we can look at that, too.
Yep.
Yep, thank you, Tony, great work, great, great work, by the way. Yeah, let's chase down Livingston and see what we get out. All right. Next is the acceptance of municipal ADA improvement grant for six thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents from the Massachusetts Office of Disability. Who would like to present this?
I can, I can start off anyway, Alyssa's here if I miss anything or screw up. The committee decided on a proposal for this year, after discovering that the lists were not fundable through the ADA program, at least at this point, they're proposing accessible tables outside the library.
And all three parks.
And all three parks. And that's what this cost comes to, using the M A S for Massachusetts to construction program. And so we have been approved for that grant, and I'm going to forward it for your acceptance.
What was the grant for? I don't, I just see this email.
This, this doesn't, how, you want to come forward?
Yeah, I gotta...
Describe the...
So here's just a picture of the...
Just watch yourself next board today, so.
They are, it's for, the grant is for seven ADA accessible tables, so four, three sides of the tables have seats, one is open, so a wheelchair could slide into it. We're planning on putting two at each park and one outside of the library.
Cool.
Excellent.
Two, two at each park? So two at Greenridge and two at Pine Grove?
Yes.
Is there any going to go up to Chamberlain?
Yes, yeah, and that too. And one at the library.
So total of how many?
Seven.
Great.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to accept?
Yeah, make a motion, keep the question going. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the municipal ADA improvement grant in the amount of six thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents from the Massachusetts Office on Disabilities.
I will second that.
Motion's second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And great work by the committee, thank you so much. Excellent work.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Thank you, Alyssa. All right. And Alyssa, it looks like that, Tom, are you receiving this e-signature document, or does that come to, that goes to you?
Yes, we have a bit of a runaround relating to that, but we're on track to get all of that settled out. They're, they're moving to all electronic forms.
That's fine, yeah.
Some adjustment that we're doing.
Okay. F Y twenty-five budget presentations, let's see, we have, first up is our town planner?
Yeah, but, yeah.
Come on up to the hot seat.
I just wanted to, to make a few general observations. Behind this larger packet of individual budgets, there are three documents I just wanted to draw your attention to. The first one is, as requested, accounts with the projected largest F Y twenty-five-dollar rise. I presented the percentages before. The ones with, with boxes around them and in bold are external to the town, for instance, the school, retirement, and insurance, also educational education, some debt down towards the bottom. So those are items that are beyond the town's control. At the bottom, I've added a total, and this goes down to one, budgets that are over a thousand dollars more than last year, which I think is a reasonable cut on point, not to include everything. These particular budgets total eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. And taking away the sewer part of that, which is accounted for by a separate sewer fee, that totals something like seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Externally, the items are five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, which is about seventy percent of the added dollar rise. And the internal items are about two twenty-five, or about thirty percent of the additional
And the school district looks like it's fifty percent of that rise, Tom.
Of the external.
Of the external.
Yeah.
I hope they sharpen their pencil before they approach the board. I hope they sharpen their pencil before they approach the board.
So that's, I thought that was a useful breakdown to give.
That's very helpful.
Secondly, there's just my latest copy of the, of my own ongoing budget figure. The items in green are budgets that had been submitted in this for FY25. And on the very last page, I'm pleased to say that we're down to only projected to reduce our accessibility capacity by 64,600. Started off at 180,000, so we're doing pretty well.
Yeah.
And that would still mean a 4% rise in the average tax bill. So again, a large portion of that being factors that we don't control.
On your external groups, are these percentage changes actual or are they projected? Me and Berkshire County Retirement is, is up 14.7%. School District's up 3%.
Yeah, again, the ones in green are ones that we have actual figures for. We don't have any school or insurance figures. Yeah, I don't think we have any of those. Those are all estimates. I will say that the, the insurance figures and the retirement figures should be very close.
Yeah, I think the health insurance is going up 8% last I saw on the news.
Yes, and our property and casualty is going up almost 10.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's good. Any, any questions on the board on those?
I'm sorry, health insurance is going up 10 here. Must be property and casualty up.
Yeah, I think the health insurance is actually 8. I saw something on ITC in general, but my, my number is.
Yeah, we're, we're topping out this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board on those summary figures? And thank you for doing that, Tom. It's very helpful.
Oh, and, and just one final thing I also have. The, the final general piece I have is just a list of all the money items that have been suggested. There are some changes to this. This isn't the final thing. For instance, Bud and I have a new proposal for the transfer station, but that, that's for later date. However, if you do have any questions on any of these, please let me know as soon as possible. I do hope that we can discuss them. It's on the agenda for a little bit later, but I just wanted to mention it now as well.
Okay. All right, any questions for our town manager on that? Here none, we'll move to our town planner, 175. Michael?
Okay, Donald Select Ford, I'm here to present my fiscal year 2025 budget. And for this fiscal year, the budget will remain the same except for the increase in, for the salary. And on the expenses, the increase will be for mapping software. The town currently doesn't have any mapping software that I can use to create maps or manipulate them. So it would be a subscription to Arc Pro Professional Standard, which is a GIS software for $3,025 a year. And this comes with the maintenance there with help from Esri, the creators of the software. So it comes with all the features, all the bells and whistles that a town planner would need to effectively use GPS data. And with that, I can take maps that I get from, sorry, I can take data that I get from VRPC, MapsJS, or even OpenJS sources, and use that to create new maps, to add to older maps, manipulate current maps, and really tailor maps to fit for our needs. As of right now, we have only a few layers on the GIS surveyor school. And while those are great, I'm sure it would be great to have more layers added to that map so we can see more things. For example, a map that the town could use as a emergency management map. We're working right now on the acidification plan committee. We're trying to come up with plans for how to handle natural disasters that occur within Dalton and the process that would be. So this could be used in a project like that. For example, solar panels also, Todd has been looking at lots of buildings in town. He's been doing a look at the town hall. This could potentially map, say, the buildings in Dalton that would like to or are able to have solar panels on them. So just to give you an idea, and currently we use VRPC for a lot of our maps. And this would allow me to use the maps that they give me and then tweak them a bit or, like I say, tailor them to fit. And it would not have us constantly rely on, well, I like Mark Millway a lot, you know, not having to ask him every single time for a map and being able to create our own organic maps, I think would be a good investment for the town.
Absolutely. If I can add one thing, our former town planner used his alumni access to his former school's GIS program as a, as a recently, as a recent grant.
Sure.
So that's why we had access to the system with our former.
Okay.
We no longer have that.
Makes sense. Thank you, Tom, for that. And, and Yako, thank you for the nice memo.
Yeah, good memo, thank you.
Any motion from the board? TA?
TA, I think it's.
Is this, this is your first formal budget process with us?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so basically, just to let you know, we basically tentatively approve this, right? Because the board doesn't really, we don't necessarily approve the budget. We'll question, make questions and cuts if necessary or support other things. But the formal approvals were at our town meeting with the vote of, you know, as presented by finance committees and by the vote of the residents. That's kind of the process. So just want to make sure you don't go out saying, go, I'm going to go buy that software now as we tentatively approve it. But that's kind of the process, so. So TA?
TA.
TA, okay.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
No.
No, I think it's completely reasonable and your memo explained a lot of what we needed there, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Do we have another one in town planner or we good? Let's say, right?
That's it. I think we don't have any other budgets.
No, that'll be it.
Okay.
Excellent.
You're off the hook.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Keep up the great work by the way.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next one is 222 Communications. Kathy, come on up to the hot seat.
The first one on the list is, please.
No, just going by the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll go before her.
Get out of here, right?
Arnie, so what are we looking at here?
So mine pretty much stayed within the 3%. It did go up to a total of 5.41, and the reason for that is we did have one additional item in my expenditures. And it's the fourth one down in red. It says new. The state 911 department used to maintain all the recording systems in every P S app that didn't already have their own. To a tune of about 150 to 200 P S apps throughout Massachusetts. And they finally said, hey, this is a lot of space that we're maintaining. Because they used, they would maintain our reported phone calls, our recorded radios, and well, as well as the 911 calls. So they went to all the P S apps, buddy, you have to go, and they said, you have three years to get off, to get your own recorders. So we did do that through our support incentive grant. We have our own recording system now. So the additional is the $2,600 annually to maintain the recording system and the software to equip her. So if anything goes wrong, we just call them up and they make sure everything's working for us. So that, you know, having a small, smaller expenditure budget, it, it's a small amount, but it does push my budget over that.
Sure, yeah. That's on.
Really, it's understandable.
Yep. And that's for all three towns, so part of that probably gets tracked back to the other towns we contract? Or how do we, how do we, how do we deal with that, the financial?
We really don't. I mean, we have our contract based on their call volumes for the three towns. I know, you know, and I know with the support incentive grant, I know Sandy takes certain things out of that for Dalton and before it's, so it's not shared back to all of it, to the towns. But we don't really do anything as far as, you know, like an expense like this.
Well, we should. Any operational expense that hits that, that communications department, if we're providing services for all three town, or three towns, right? And Dalton's one of them, those other two towns should get charged a percentage of their call volume based upon all expenses within the operation. And if we're not doing that, we should evaluate and make sure we're doing it correctly. So we're charging back the right, right amount and not eating any dollars.
We should look at that agreement, but I think as the budget itself, with that explanation, I would give it a TA myself.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, we, we should, to the question, we should make sure that we're charging back everything under the operation as a percentage of their call volume. TA put the, the budget?
TA for the budget.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the police chief. The floor is yours, chief.
Which one do you want to do first?
Whatever's easier for you. The 210?
We really don't, didn't go up much this year at all, I think an overall of 2.9%. So my goal is to keep it under 3. So we had our contractual salary increases and then we had, do you want to just do salaries first and then we'll move to expenses?
Yes, that's fine.
So just. So the one new thing I'll put in there, we did an 8% for a detective's position. We're pretty much the only department our size without a detective or investigator. And we ran the stats for that and the reasons we're going to move to that. It's not, we're not adding an additional officer, but when we get the next one out of the academy, we're just going to do a little staffing transition and just like have one person be in that role. You know, in 2022, we had 306 investigations and 106 arrests. 2023, we had 352 investigations with 125 arrests for military charges. And right now for 2024, we're already at 21 arrests since the first of the year and 42 investigations. So we are, we are swamped. I mean, just our numbers are through the roof. Not necessarily because we're a high criminal community. It's just we have a very proactive group of officers that are doing a lot of work proactively. So we're seeing a significant increase in drug driving arrests, domestic violence, which we're called to. A lot of investigations are taking place. So my reason for doing that is to streamline our response. Because depending on what shift someone comes in with something, you have officers with different levels of training, different levels of investigative experience. And this way, we would be able to make it just a better service to someone in need in our community.
So that's not a new FTE. That's just basically promote somebody to that role and keep them with the same FTE volume, which is an 8%.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not a new full-time position. You're basically taking the current staff and promoting them to that role in an 8%.
Right, right. Increase.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, if our, if our call volume keeps increasing the way it is, we may have a different conversation next year.
Sure, yeah, sure.
But it's just, you know, we had over 15,000 calls for service last year, which is a lot for a smaller department. So that was the only new addition in the salary. Everything else is just contractual.
Any questions from the board on salary?
Nope.
I'd say TA on the salary.
Okay. How about expenses, chief?
The only highlight on the expenses is we got the live scan fingerprint machine, which we got for free through the state, but we had to pay to connect it, so that costs us just a little bit more. So you see that annual software support budget went up a little bit.
You've got a ton of grants this last fiscal year, didn't you?
Yeah, a lot of grants.
What was the total?
The last fiscal year was about 151,000, I believe. So Becky and I work a lot on grants, try to get any free money we can.
Yep.
We got a lot of equipment, too. We got a portable breathalyzer. The traffic grant, we just got again, the body cams for last year, but in that fiscal.
Any questions on the expenses? TA?
I'd say TA.
Awesome job.
Great job, yeah.
We moved some things around.
Thank you, Becky, for that work.
Great job keeping everything in focus.
I promise, I promise. I said, first two years was going to take us a little time to get where we needed to be. And you guys were very good to us about that, and now we're where we need to be, so.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
So next one is 292 Animal Control.
Yeah. This one's pretty easy, too. So we had to go up a little bit on the gasoline budget on this one. Because we are in January and we are $240 over in the gasoline. He's basically been placed on house arrest and not allowed to leave the station until the end of the fiscal year, which he's not super excited about. But we are over, so.
Is 1,500 enough?
It's going to have to be. I mean, it's, you know, it's a 20-hour-a-week position. We really shouldn't be burning that much gas, so.
All right.
I appreciate his, you know, wanting to drive around, but it's not a patrol position, so.
Understood.
We can, we can cut that back a little bit.
Okay.
TA?
TA.
Yeah.
That's good.
And was that it, chief?
I think that was it, because we did our animal inspector budget previously.
Okay. Chief, on animal control, real quick, just going back to the budget first. How are we doing with that kennel situation?
So the San Sini shelter closed, as you know, so we made our cells into a very, very temporary kennel. It will work for, you know, a very short-term situation. The, the old San Sini, it looks like it's opening in North Adams, which is just out of our reach. So I emailed the sheriff to see if he would be interested in doing a regional kennel. When he stopped laughing at me, he couldn't laugh. No, he was really great about it, actually, and he said I wasn't the first person to approach that. And I did remind him that Franklin County was currently doing that program. So I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility, but at least I put it in his, his mind because most of the small towns here are without a kennel option. So we are lucky enough, we have like a very temporary option, but it's not a long-term.
And we see temporary hold in the animals for, what, 24, 48 hours?
I would say so. I, I wouldn't really like to keep a dog in that old jail cell. It's not really very.
What do they go after that, chief?
They go to your house, bud.
Yeah.
Bring them over.
You're going to just wrap them off, you know, you guys look like nice people.
Yeah, drop them off at that point.
We don't take in, we don't take in surrenders. We don't do that at all. It's more of a, if it's an animal cruelty situation where we have to take the dog, you know, for a short term. But, you know, the difficulty is the humane society wants outrageous amount of money to hold a space open for us. So we can't afford to do that for the amount of dogs that we would bring there. It's so minimal. It was upwards of like $25,000, I think. And, you know, we're talking maybe five to 10 dogs a year at most, so that's just not an option for us.
It's manageable at the moment?
Yeah, so far we're doing really well with it. So we have the supplies and, you know, Jeff did a good job getting that all squared away for us.
All right, great. All right, we're all set on budget?
Let us know if we need to address anything else there budget-wise.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Didn't mean to make it so easy for you guys, but.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Good work.
Your ones, right?
We got the building department next?
Yes, I can report on that. The only change aside from the regular step of the quote increase for salaries is an increase in the software support agreement. This is the same agreement that we heard before from the health agents, but this is the building inspector's side of that same thing in software. So this part of it is also going up $2,540. And that's, that's the cost of doing business with this program, which apparently saves an amazing amount of time. It's a great program to use, but it is expensive and it was originally offered at a price, at an attractive price that was not, it was destined not to stay as low as it was originally. So that's the cost of the, that's the increase in the expenses. That's permitized, permitized.
There are, I mean, that's a pretty significant, I mean, we're not going to, it's pennies on the, you know, dollar in the grand scheme of things, though. But it's just a significant jump in software support agreement.
That's kind of happening across the board, well, in multiple departments is what we're seeing. Increase in software support agreement costs. So, yeah, these companies are definitely, they, they get you in. So, yeah, these companies are definitely, uh, they, they get you in at a low, a lower introductory price and now we're, we're having to pay for the actual cost of these services.
Yeah.
And that's, that's what we're seeing is.
So there's other options, all right?
But if there are other options, certainly.
Should be considered.
Start to consider those, um, if not this budgeting round, definitely by, by next, we may wanna look at lower-cost options potentially.
Yeah, okay. TA?
Are we protected by any future increases for a period of time under our contract? Or is it just a one-year subscription and that's it?
It's an annual subscription.
TA?
TA.
All right, uh, next is emergency management.
Mr. Glenn, oh, he's here.
Yeah, he's here, very, very, I was wondering who that man was with the hat and the gray sweater, kinda ducking down. How are you, sir?
Good.
Hi, Glenn.
How are you?
Down there?
Yeah. What, what, what do we, um, are we missing anything, Glenn, or are there more than the capital list because of everything else you work on?
No, the only thing, the only thing we ask, um, there's an increase, and I know you look at the numbers, it says like it's a twelve percent budget increase or something, and, but then you look how much we have budgeted.
Yeah.
Five dollars is up there. So, um, but we're, I'm asking for a little bit extra, two hundred and fifty dollars extra over last year's budget for some extra training, and it's all centered around the civilian emergency response team, which we're trying to put together. So, um, that's kind of the next project down the radar is to, and I think I've explained it to the board, is to, um, put together a volunteer civilian force to supplement the, um, the fire department, police department at a time of emergency need, training them in evacuation procedures, training them in traffic control, training them in, you know, things like handing out supplies, um, and have that supplemental while the fire department's out putting the water in the fire or whatever it is. This group could be behind the scenes helping out. So there's some training involved with that. It is something that's, it, it was in place in the state for a while, it's being pushed again by me, so there is some training going out there. There's some train-the-trainer exercises and things of that nature, which I wanna look at. And the other part of that is the emergency management trailer. There is the emergency management trailer that's, uh, sitting up at the DPW. It's basically a comb car, because that's all it's been used for is, you know, to throw combs in and drive them around the town. And we need them for something like the carnival. I like to pull it out, fix it up, put some shelves in there, make it a usable piece of equipment, that we can then, uh, put a small generator in it, get some lights in it, um, put, uh, some clothing stuff in it for the civilian emergency response team, so if they do have to respond somewhere, um, they'll have a, a trailer that they can, um, actually use. So that's kind of the bulk of why you see there's an increase.
If I could make a comment.
That's interesting.
Ever since I heard about the SERV concept, I've been a financial supporter. It's, it's really, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's meant to be kind of a neighborhood-based, um, network where every smaller neighborhood has a point person who is aware of emergency response.
That's fantastic, yeah.
Methods and, and procedures and can organize neighbors to go look out for their neighbors. You know, they say in a major event, it's the first forty-eight hours that are the most crucial. And oftentimes, uh, the highway crew and, and, and everybody else is out, you know, cutting trees out of roads. And, and, you know, just trying to open up the paths to get to people. If you have people who know, uh, to go out to their neighbors and say, hey, you know, I have a generator or so-and-so has a generator, and how are you doing? And, uh, we know that, uh, somebody here is elderly or something like that. They can, um, they can really make a huge difference in the first forty-eight hours of a major emergency. And it's, it's kind of amazing that all, all towns don't have a little bit of that concept. I, I just can't, can't say enough about the idea, and I'm really glad that Len is this take.
I, I think it's great, just from what you're, what you're sharing, you're, I think you're spot on, Tom, and I think it's a great idea. And just to put it out there, we always do those kind of educational sessions before the town meet. And for recruitment purposes, if we're going forward, we wanna just do something like we can do a quick, you know, five-minute presentation or something.
The only, uh, right now it's procedure.
Yeah.
The biggest, um, I wanna make sure before we start pulling people, I don't wanna lose people.
You're building up the model, okay.
So many times, you throw something out there and you say, oh, we wanna do it, and then you say, then hold on a minute while we get policy and training and procedure in place, and then they lose interest.
That's a great point.
So I wanna make sure we have a clearly defined avenue for them now, like to train, but, you know, definition of the job. And one of the things that I'm, you know, I'm gonna have to give with the town, and it's procedurally, you know, liability, what, what, they're volunteer. And once we put them on the volunteer, do we swear them in, do we not swear them in?
Sure.
Like, they're out directing traffic, we call them in, the town says come in on a volunteer basis to direct traffic at Main and South while the fire department's taking battle on the fire, training company around the tracks, one of them gets hit.
Great point.
So I, I wanna make sure that, you know, before we bring in a volunteer force like that, that we as a town have a clear understanding of what, what our responsibilities are, as well as their responsibilities.
Let us know when you're ready, yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
TA on the budget?
TA.
Okay, and thank you for any one.
Thanks a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion preliminary CVRSD budget?
I do not have, uh, I, I understand, uh, that they had, uh, produced a preliminary budget, but I don't have it.
Okay, so we'll just table that for the next one?
Yeah.
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 Okay. Uh, discussion of departmental money articles requested.
Yeah, so this goes back to those, uh, other, uh, documents that I was going through earlier. And, uh, the last one of those is a compilation of all of the items that, uh, have been requested or, uh, for consideration. And there are a lot of them, um, I think they're all justifiable. Uh, some of them will change. Again, we, we just, we just saw the request for the green committee change to the tune of, uh, really, if, if, if everything works out lowering that, you know, not having that cost any money. So that's really good news.
For the level three, yeah.
Well, and that's for level three, and we're gonna have level two.
Whatever we decide.
Yeah, it's, you know, so we just heard the presentation on that. For the, the DPW, there are several, uh, transfer station items. One is equipment, one is, uh, a renovation, getting twenty-five percent engineering done, and one was a swap shop. What we've done is we've, we've asked, uh, an engineer for an estimate for a full redesign of the transfer station. Because one of the things we've noticed is the concrete blocks that are under the, the main part of it, where, you know, right in front of the trash and the recycling, those concrete blocks are crumbling substantially. Obviously, the shed is not in great condition. We're sort of putting things in, um, not entirely haphazard, but it looks pretty good. But if we were to add other things, where would they go? Is the traffic flow correct? One of the things we considered before was the possibility of receiving recycling from, uh, private town haulers. And we've got a preliminary design for that that involves more land. So looking at the total amount of land we have available and all of the functions that we might wanna have now or plan for the future, one of those being, uh, a potential composting facility, which would take out at least half of our solid, our physical solid waste weight because food scraps are, there's a lot of water in them and water's very heavy. We would wanna include the possibility of having a, a transfer station that was able to do all of those functions. And the estimate for that, uh, engineering study was sixty-eight thousand dollars. So I've been talking with Bud about just taking all of these items we're thinking about for the transfer station, which totaled sixty thousand dollars, and just having, uh, the engineering done for a major renovation. Talk about capital planning, this is one of the things that's been on my mind, but hasn't, you know, necessarily gotten a lot of play because mainly because of the, the concrete footings of the, uh, the current transfer station, um, spalling and just crumbling. So I wanted to point that one out particularly as well. So partly just to say this is still very much in progress. There are a number of items under mine that I, I don't know we necessarily wanna go through them one by one right now, but if anyone does have any questions, uh, I would urge you to let me know, tell me more about this, and I will.
Could you send that list out to us, so we can just?
Yeah, well, you.
You should have it in your email from the packet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It'll, it'll be there. So the good news is that we're gonna have a lot of free cash. We don't know exactly how much now, that's the next thing Sandy's working on. She's actually going away for, uh, for, um, a happy family occasion, um, for, uh, for a couple of weeks. Uh, and, but free cash is, is the next thing she's gonna, she's gonna work on. And, you know, we, I, we expect it to be, um, at least two point one million. All of these totaled, um, the free cash asked from it would be one point three. So that would leave a substantial amount for emergency spending in the middle of the year if we need to have a special town maybe to spend my amount on something.
And if I recall last meeting, Tom, when I brought the concern of all the other stuff we had in front of us, we got a Walker Brook for two fifty and then Dalton Division for seven hundred, you said that would be a different, different funding mechanism through loans, right?
Yeah, so I have grant application funds for Walker Brook here at twenty thousand dollars because that's what engineering firms suggested to me, they would need to start the process of engineering. All the work they do would be reimbursed by the grant that they would get. But again, in a former town I worked in, it took us four years to actually get the grant.
Right, but we'd set up to have the matching funds, just the point being that those would be through loans and not necessarily free cash, right?
For.
For the expenses of Dalton Division, which we're looking at the sewer line for seven hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah, no, those aren't, those aren't free cash.
Right, those are loans.
Yeah. Yeah.
With debt.
The seven hundred dollars, debt for the engineering?
No, it's the estimated sewer installation.
Uh, no, the, the.
Eh, it's all.
Yeah, very much, Mr. Bull, except that it was for the sewer installation.
Yeah, the estimated, the, the seven hundred thousand was, was for engineering the sewer, the estimated.
No.
No, no, we, we paid eighty thousand for the estimate.
I'm sorry, it was a small amount.
That was, that was the amount for the road itself, right? The, uh, estimated construction cost of the sewer was about two million.
Yes.
Two million?
Yeah. And.
Two, two million to hook up fourteen homes?
Yeah, there, there, there are two options, uh, one of them is one point eight, one's two point one. Both Bud and I prefer the two point one because it's a gravity fed system with no pump, so we wouldn't have to maintain.
Two point one million for a sewer line's gonna hook up fourteen homes versus nineteen million dollars of road repairs.
Again, I have, um, approached, it's, I will share this time, and I, I'm afraid I don't have a formal town manager report, but I did, uh, meet with Pittsfield and I have sent them the cost of the various projects. I have not received the apply, but.
When can we see a three-year projection of capital?
I would, I can start working on that, I can't guarantee a time right now. There are, it, it depends on what, you know, the priorities are of the board. I can come up with a whole list. I have a list of possible capital projects, certainly. Uh, and that'll depend on prioritization. So I, I can, I can bring you something next time for, for all of the capital projects that I can think of that we might wanna do.
Let's do that.
Yes, some of them have estimates attached to them, some of them don't.
Okay, true.
Yeah.
Cause that, I thought it was seven hundred thousand for a sewer line, so, Mr. Bull, thank you for asking that question, cause I would.
Yeah, I think that's for the engineering, you know, the balance.
I would, I would ask the board to reconsider that decision at two point one. But we'll, we'll deal with that later, we can't talk about, no, we can't talk about it tonight, so, so we'll.
Just say this, this is five years away. Two thousand twenty-eight, twenty-nine. You got a lot of time to think about it, there's a lot of options, borrowing, finding this debt, this, uh, grants.
It'll be much higher by then.
Yeah.
And I think the priority, we, we need to go through the three-year, even to your point five-year, whatever.
Yeah, five.
Do a five-year because we, we're looking at some major things. We know we got major road issues, we know we got other conditions in town that, um, we gotta really think through this a little bit before we start spending.
Maybe five more would be better.
One point three or two point one free cash.
Oh, yeah, this, I, I'm, I'm presuming that any capital project would be for borrowing. And probably what would be best would be to do multiple, borrowing for multiple capital projects at once to get a better rate. You know, that's.
Theoretically, interest rates are coming down.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Real good. I think we've borrowed for a lot of these projects that we know our, our funding interest rate was around one or two percent.
Some people thought they were gonna be coming down a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
How much did we spend last year out of free cash? You have that figure or?
I don't have that, oh, uh, I don't have that figure.
And how much of the free cash are we gonna direct to, reduce the tax rate?
Seven hundred thousand on the list.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
We always do the two hundred thousand, again.
We could always increase that too, it's a thought.
It, it's, the way to cut the operating budget is to cut the operating budget. If you fund it through free cash and you don't cut the operating budget, the following year, you have to pay not only the amount that you cut by, but the amount that it goes up. So the taxpayers get a double payment the following year, unless you just keep subsidizing with free cash, but that is, uh,
Sometimes you gotta do something. Some of it should be considered, I mean, there's obviously, uh, the, the strong opinions in this town that the tax rate is too high.
Absolutely.
We have to look toward ways to adjust it, this is one.
The way to, uh, uh, fiscally responsibly address that is to cut the operating budget.
Yeah, but there may be other ways. It's such as using more free cash.
No, that's not a long-term solution, it's a solution for one year. And then the next year.
Did you get the same?
Level of free cash.
Has the finance committee reviewed this, Tom, especially the transfers from free cash for general stabilization, capital, sewer, legal, OPEB? Mr. Bull has pointed about the tax rate and reserve fund, have they agreed to these, these figures?
Uh, they haven't agreed to them, I handed them out an earlier version of this. If we have more free cash available, I would like to put more cash into the.
I would recommend, I would move that we have finance committee review that section for their.
Yeah, absolutely.
For their review and approval.
Somebody just mentioned the old payment, are we done with that?
Never be done with it, we're just, we're just fully funded.
Fully funded, fully funded, yeah.
Our liability is fully funded, our liability also grows every year because the costs of healthcare grow every year. So the estimate that our financial, um, advisor told us was, well, you should fund it at a hundred and twenty percent and add eight percent every year. I think that's a bit much, I think a target of funding it at a hundred and ten percent, that's to absorb any market fluctuations. And then funding it as necessary to keep it at that level is sufficient.
And again.
The, the more it gets, the more we'll get interest as well, so that's, that will contribute to the amount that the fund grows.
But it is also part of the operating budget. It may not be necessary to fund it at a hundred and twenty percent, uh, estimate, rather than maybe just a hundred percent.
Well, again, I think a hundred and ten is, is a, is a good figure to avoid. So if the market takes a ten percent dip, we're still fully funded.
Yeah, we just said twenty percent.
That's what our financial advisor suggested.
Who is he?
Dawn has?
Dawn?
Yeah, Dawn, no, Dawn's not the financial advisor, she, she has a financial advisor for the town.
Okay.
So, yeah, and that, that's what they're advising, again, I don't think it's necessary to keep it at that amount, and I think Dawn agrees with that.
We might consider 110 instead of 120.
I, well, yeah, right now, we're not at 110 yet, so we haven't, we don't have that happy problem to solve.
We're talking about reducing the operating budget, there's one opportunity right there. Hey, hey, we wasted enough time on this.
Again, we, we're funding that through free cash, not through appropriations.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't show up in the tax rate, doesn't show up in the, in the tax.
Everything is connected, we would have more, if we followed this course of action, we would have more free cash to reduce the tax rate. All right.
Cause I'm not comfortable with the transfers from free cash go to first section, Tom, cause I don't know what the balance is in any of those categories, so that's, I have a motion to move that to the finance committee for review and approval, use your second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor? Aye opposed, abstentions, motion carries. And I don't think we need to take any other action on this list yet, right?
No.
Okay. All right, so next?
Yeah, again, if anyone has any questions about any of these, please let me know, so I can clear up as much as I can in advance.
So next item on the agenda is sign a letter to the Water Commissioners regarding the ARPA fund return. So last board meeting on 2/5/24, we voted 4-0 to withdraw our support, so I'll just read the letter for the record. As of February 12, 2024, Board of Water Commissioners, Dalton Fire and Water District, 20 Plainsburg Ave., Dalton Masser, 1226, Dear Commissioners, Dalton Select Board, voted unanimously on 4-0 on 2/5/24 to withdraw our support of the ladder truck purchase, and do not support your efforts to renegotiate the contract with Northern Fire. The board members believe that the purpose of the expenditure is very unlikely to be realized, since the delay has been over one year. Leadership from the Fire Department and the Water Commission provided updates through 2023 that the truck was on its way. Based on the photographic evidence and lack of progress so far, the vehicle in question is simply never going to be a well-functioning tower truck for the district, and more likely than not, be a safety issue for the Fire Department staff. We also understand and appreciate that you are, are ready to take legal action and try to recover, the money already spent, we support moving forward with that effort immediately. At the same time, the town is bound to commit its ARPA funds by the end of the calendar year, this is a federal requirement, we are therefore required the remaining amount be returned to the town only in April 1, 2024. We also do not support a reappropriation of the funds for any other fire, fire district purpose without a review of that request by the Dalton Select Board compared to all other urgent town needs. Request monthly updates begin on March 1, 2023, please send all updates to Select Board Chair and CC Town Manager Hutchinson. Any board members that can make any edits to this letter, or motion that can edit this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the letter as presented.
Mr. Driscoll have anything to say?
Um, there's nothing for, if he wants to comment, that'll be fine, but there's nothing that he can comment that would change this decision from the fifth. So the request tonight is just to review the letter and approve it.
I mean, I think the overall premise of the letter is fine, just some of the claims in the letter, I'm not sure we have evidence.
No, which claims, Mr. Esco?
The vehicle in question is simply never going to be a well-functioning tower truck for the district, and more likely than not be a safety issue for the Fire Department staff, we don't know that that's true or false. I, I can't, I mean, I saw some pictures of a truck in progress, but it's not a completed truck.
So making that into a letter.
So, I just, yeah.
I don't agree with this letter at all, because, well, there's been talk of recent developments with the truck. And I'm not sure what they are, maybe it would be?
Well, on the fifth, Mr. Bowles, this board voted 4-0 to write a letter withdrawing our support. The question tonight before us?
Yeah, we did, we think?
The question tonight before us is to edit this letter and sign it. If you'd like to make edits to the letter, please present the edits.
I don't have any, but I, uh?
Okay, Mr. Esco, do you have an edit?
Well, I wasn't here for the vote.
You're welcome to make an edit, for sure.
I mean, I might potentially want to edit that sentence that I mentioned, maybe strike the ending of the sentence. But I, I have to think a little bit more on what that sentence should say.
You can just scratch the whole sentence, just leave it as, the, the board members believe the purpose of the expenditure is very unlikely to be realized, since the delay has been over one year. Leadership from the Fire Department Water Commission provided updates through 2023, the truck was on its way, period.
Based on the photographic evidence?
No, you can just strike that, strike that last whole section, if you want to.
Dan, would you be okay with saying, based on the photographic evidence and the lack of progress so far, the vehicle in question may never be a well-functioning tower truck for the district?
Yeah, it, it may, it may not ever be, that's true.
Okay, so is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Okay. Okay, and instructions, do you have that, that edit? Any edits with the letter? Okay, Kevin, motion to approve the letter with the requested edit.
Mr. Chairman, a motion that we approve the letter to the Board of Water Commissioners as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Great, thank you. We'll make that edit, and Tom, when it's ready, we'll sign it.
Yeah, I'll let everybody know when it's ready, come in and sign.
Okay. Next is the ARPA expense review and requests.
Yeah, I thought I would pick the ARPA attorney, Sandy has requested a, that, and the additional, this is the letter from Tyne Bond in your, or the first, the? I'm sorry, this is, that's not, oh. That, that's the sewer system one. I'm sorry, apparently we got confused on which Tyne Bond attached services were supposed to be. I just mentioned that Sandy has requested that? Oh no, I'm sorry, this, this is it, it's the letter, Tyne Bond background scope of additional services. That, that's the first, I'm sorry, that's actually the second, that's the 3800, that's, that's why this is coming up tonight. Sandy has requested that this additional 3800 also be approved to come from, to ARPA, because the original amount for this amount has come, came from ARPA, and that's how it's, it's been treated already, so.
Okay.
It's a relatively small amount, the, the rest, the background is to say, basically, based on Dawn's work, that we have roughly 120,000 remaining to be committed in ARPA, but that is not included, some projects that have not been completed may have money left over.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the additional monies requested by Tyne Bond in the amount of $3,800 to use ARPA funds for this request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
And the, the other Tyne Bond documents are just saying how we got to that extra 300, uh, 3,000, 800.
Dan, I know we got it in here somewhere, but right now, I have to take out the 3800, what's the balance in the ARPA?
Uh, again, that's about 120,000 dollars.
Thank you, no, you don't have to look it up.
That was, no, that was in Dawn's, Dawn's document.
I, I know I had, but I just? Was he here to ask you?
Yeah, it's, it's the document that starts ARPA receipts.
Yep, okay.
It's on page three.
Good.
That's. It's a complex document.
Okay, next is?
That's all for that.
Tom, manager of the, we just had a meeting, Tom, you mentioned earlier that you didn't have it?
Yes, and I've actually already given a couple.
Okay, so you all have said it tonight?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Future agenda items, there is a, items of future agenda list in our packet, are there any other future agenda items that we should add to the list?
Well, we're gonna, at some point in time, talk again about the EV station out here in the park. In terms of a dump money, existing money into it, and this is, and also, not in hand, yet accessible.
Any other future agenda items?
Uh, well, the capital projects for next time, so at least a list with as many estimates as I have.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
Oh, and you?
Select board meeting?
In the letter, it requests an update from the Dalton Fire District, not for our next meeting, but maybe the first one in March.
Yep. Well, it's not a meeting, that's just a, a email to me and you, it's not a meeting.
Well, you just?
It's an email update.
Not an agenda item?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, just an email update.
Okay.
Or a communication update, they're more welcome to come and speak to it, for sure, but that's not required.
Uh, we have select board meeting location, revisit when wheelchair lift is repaired. What's the status? I mean, maybe we can bring this up in the next, actually talk about this?
Why, why are we being held hostage to this repair on this piece of equipment?
Because residents cannot access if they have handicapped disabilities.
Why are we holding meetings in the town hall all day?
What's?
The planning board has consistently held money.
We should not be, we should not.
They held meetings consistently, we haven't had that done, consistently during the fall over the robbers matter, with large crowds, and DRA meets there, and other boards meet there, but the select board can't. I just don't understand it.
That, that's a chair's preference.
The chair's preference.
That's a chair's or those committees' preference, well?
Then I think we should have a vote in the board.
We did, we did in October, we said we're not going back until the wheel, until the lift is finished.
Voted on it?
What's the ETA on that, Tom?
I propose we talk about this item at the next meeting.
That's fine.
Put it on the agenda, please.
Yeah.
And we can, we can stop talking about it now.
I, I can get a job to report on that.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. I only mentioned it because it's on the list of future agenda items, did not mention it to talk about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Bring it back up.
Yep. Review time, town cybersecurity audit, did that happen yet, or we?
No, it's, I'm gonna come back through executive session when it's ready.
Okay.
Any other future agendas?
No.
Okay, hear none? Items not anticipated for yet, hours before the meeting. Okay, hear none? Any remarks to the select board? No. Okay, hear none? Announcements, annual car permits, bag stickers, recycling only car permits are available for purchase at the transfer station on the town's website. There are numerous committees and boards with vacancies, please see the town website for more information, or reach out to the town manager's office. Is your electricity bill too high? The town has contracted with Colonial Power to provide electricity plan for town residents that takes advantage of joining with other communities to have larger customer base for negotiations, which has resulted in prices lower than current resource prices. Please note this may not always be the case, for more detail on opt-in or opt-out, visit the town's website or call the town manager's office. Dalton Housing Authority is seeking to volunteer to fill a vacancy on this board, must be a resident of Dalton, please call 413-684-1470 for more information. Dalton Police Department would like to remind residents of the Winter Park in Bay, which is in effect from November 15, 2023, through April 15, 2024, there'll be no parking allowed on the streets between these dates and between the hours of 1 a.m. and 6 a.m. The, the Department of Public Works would like to remind residents to remove basketball hoops in the roadway, as well as ones that hang over the roadway, roadway between the dates of November 1, 2023, and April 15, 2024. Next meeting, the next meeting scheduled to take place on Tuesday, February 20, 2024, at 7 p.m. at the senior center with an option for remote participation, and with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? We'll call a vote. Oh, we're done, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries, good night Dalton, gentlemen, you got a contract here to sign.
Oh yeah, we have two contracts.
To you, through executive session, Sam.